Let's get started. Again, being respectful of people's times, we will end at 7:30 tonight. If we don't get through everything, we'll just continue it on. For the public, this is just a continuation of board discussion regarding finances and budget. There was discussion that we wanted to delve deeper into this so that we would understand and the public could understand all the intricacies of school finance. So, we will continue that discussion and I'll turn it over to the administration.
Hi, thank you Chair Liman. You already did a great intro, so we'll move to the next slide. This slide is a layout of the finance discussion dates that we've sent out to you. April 18th, tonight, May 3rd, May 29th, and June 7th, leading us all to a December 13th decision on what you might want to do with OPEB and QCOM. When we look at these sessions, we've tried to lay it out so it makes sense to you to kind of connect the dots with pieces of things. This evening, we're going to refer to the Finance 101 session that you had. Much of your document that you have in it is slides that you've already seen, but we're adding a few other pieces for you to kind of have the big picture. Part of that is the history of reductions so that you can see what that's looked like over the last few years. We have some class size data. There's lots of questions in the community about how class size is figured and what that looks like, so we'll spend time with that this evening. But as Chair Liman said, we also have it again on May 29th because there's a lot that has to do with class size. And then the budget timeline. So that's our goals to share with you this evening. On May 3rd, it's really digging into levy information and levy basics, where we are currently with our levies that we have out, and levy timelines. And that's everything that impacts us as a school district. Then on May 29th, some of the things that you have control over as a board are your negotiations with employee contracts and benefits and class size again. So we want to be able to dig into that. We thought about, you know, doing less with class size tonight, but we think it's important that you get it the first time and then are able to see it again on the 29th. On June 7th, we have a discussion regarding OPEB and QCOM. As we've shared, we need some action by the board on June 21st if you'd like us to be able to consider using those moving forward. Last year, we spent a lot of time talking about what those were and how they can help the general fund. Why we need that is in July, Director Hoheisel needs to input the information, but you have until December to actually make the decision. And then what strategy might you want using moving forward so that we have the sustainable, feasible, desirable results that you want? And then December, we'd need a final decision on OPEB and QCOM if you would want to change any of those things.
Does it have to be December 13th or do you have like two weeks after that?
It ha- that would be our truth in taxation night. That is, I believe, our only school board meeting in December, and so it would, unless you were planning on scheduling another meeting, it would have to be that night.
Other questions or comments or things about the time?
When we talk about the levy stuff next, time will we get timeline for all of that? You know, as far as when we need to make those decisions?
Sure, and we can go back to, I believe, one of your Finance 101 packets has that in it also, but we will certainly go back.
Absolutely.
So, again, I've talked a little bit about tonight. We're going to revisit Finance 101. And that's, the reason I'm saying that is many of the slides you'll see are slides that you've seen in the past, but we're going to give you a little bit more detail about what that means for Stillwater. We're going to look at our financial history and look at the budget reallocations that we've had over the last 15 years or so. We're going to dig deeply into some of the factors that impact our budget. We've talked about many of those before also, some of those you have control over, some less. And then, again, the budget timeline, just revisiting the second slide for everybody to know, you know, how we're hoping to be on track with making decisions and what you need to look forward to.
So as we move into the revisiting the Finance 101, I wanted to present to you the revenue by source. And you can see that state aids are 68% of our revenue. Local levy is 26%. And realize, everything in that local levy category would be, is your control. Now, again, it might have different, each different levy might have a different consequence and an impact, however, it is local and therefore the school board does control that. The federal aid is 2%. Essentially, we have very, very little to no control over the federal aid. And then the miscellaneous revenue, which ties to fees, tuition, interest earnings, different things that we might have some control over, maybe not its entirety. And I wanted to at least highlight this slide in part because when Director Stivlin had mentioned at the last learning session, can we have monthly finance meetings? Can we pick a topic, discuss a topic? And as, as I thought more about that and actually talked with the Finance Committee, I believe, that thing, there are more decisions, in my opinion, that you can make with the revenue side than you can make with the expenditure side. And I say that in part, at least as far as the board level decisions goes, because as you move through expenditures, you know, we had talked about you have essentially 11% flexibility unless you're doing contracts or different things. You get into different levels, whereas the revenue side pretty much is all at the board, at the board level and their discussion.
And before Director Hoheisel moves on, I just want to remind you that the local levy piece that you do have the control over, it's changed over the past several years. It used to be that your local levy, when you went out to ask your taxpayers to pay more, it was for something special that maybe you wanted your district to do. And now, because of not being able to keep up with budgets for lots of reasons, the local levy, as you can see from this graph, makes up a large portion of your budget. So when we're talking about choices and how to move forward and what programs you want and things like that, remember that that local levy is just under 30% of your budget.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Something that I think is helpful, not only for us, is for the public, and I've seen it where they go like about the last 10 years, and they show what the state legislature and the governor has approved percentage-wise. I think that brings it home a little bit better.
Same here.
Yeah, because that's a good one, I think, to see.
Could I just add to that point, Mike, is when, when we hear things like there's 2% or whatever the percentage is that you're speaking to, that 2% is only on that blue part.
Well, not even all of the blue.
And not even all of the blue part, but that's the only part that that impacts. So when people generalize and say, well, you're getting 2% increase, you're not getting 2% increase on the whole pie. You're getting 2% on 68 and not even the whole 2% of them.
Can I just quickly to this slide, the local levy, 26%? How, when you say that, that has increased over the years, like, do you have, is that accurate or how?
We've held pretty steady and that's going to be in your-
We've held steady.
And we have specifics for you in your levy presentation about what that means our history for Stillwater. But one of the board goals, I believe, has been to keep the local levy as constant as it can be.
Okay.
And so you'll see that we've been able to really achieve that, and actually we're on a downward. I think the difference between this year and last year is about $40, $40 less in taxes for the general households when we give you that.
Okay. Well, and I also think if you go back to, and I, and I think of when, even when I started my career, if you go back to what the expectation was as far as state aid versus, you know, what the state would give us versus what was expected to happen at the local levy, I think that, why, no, that piece of the pie has grown considerably larger than it was a few decades ago where most of the revenue or certainly more than what you're looking at today was coming through the state, through a state aid formula as opposed to shifting it over to local levy decisions.
So just to clarify, would pie 10 years ago look significantly different than this?
I would say the pie 20 years ago would look significantly different than this. Significant, you know, is, is certainly in the eye of the interpreter as well. It would, my, 10 years ago makes me a little nervous because I think of the recession and the things that were hap- I mean, that 10 years ago was 2009.
And you'll see that in a-
So that's why I tend to go with, you know, kind of-
A little longer. Sometimes those visuals help too when you-
Absolutely.
They talk about the Minnesota miracle being like what happened in education in Minnesota during the 80s. And that was a time when the state funded education at a much higher level than they do now. And the local levy was more like around 15%. And now we're looking at 20, 30% depending on where you live. And that is less equitable, if you think about it, because it depends on where you live. And if you don't have those spots to come up with the local levy, then you have to live without it. And if you're lucky like we are to have 26% of our budget come from local dollars, then that's great, but it really does put a lot more pressure on us as a board to really reach out to our community and really keep those dollars coming. It would be a lot more fair, in my opinion, if the state paid a bigger portion to go back to what we did before where it's more like 15%, you know, coming from local levy and the rest coming from the state.
And to that point, that's a good observation, Director Stivlin, because part of the whole reimagining Minnesota, one of the strategies is to relook at the whole Minnesota miracle and whole financing piece, but that's going to be a several-year endeavor of superintendents and lawmakers working on that together. That's a really good point.
Where does the money go? If we had, and this breakdown is specific to if we had a dollar, how many cents would go into each program? Now, please recognize that this is only the general fund. This isn't taking into account all of the other buckets. It's just our first bucket. And it is, you've seen this in different forms and there's different ways to break it down. It's by program, sometimes it's by object, and what that means is we break it down and say this much is salaries, this much is benefits, this much is contracted service. But the slide that's in front of you says this is how much, if we had a dollar, is going to go to these specific categories. 45 cents of that dollar would go to regular and vocational education. 16 cents of that dollar is going to special education. 15 cents of that dollar is going to operation and maintenance. 7 cents on transportation. 7 cents on instructional support services. And again, instructional support services is there to help the instructor. It's professional development. It's curriculum. It's items such as that. Whereas pupil support services, you're looking at counseling, health services, things that would help the student in their day-to-day activities. District support services, the easiest way to frame this is what would be district-wide kind of your non-licensed people. So it would be the business office. It would be the HR, or HR, it would be technology, something that supports your entire district but doesn't have a teaching license. And then district and school administration are the people in your district that is supporting, like the superintendent, the Board of Education, our principals. People such as that would fall under the district and school administration. And then fiscal and other fixed costs, that's where property and liability insurance comes in and various categories there.
What about interventionists?
It would, it would depend on how they're classified. I would say that would, an interventionist would probably, well-
Under categorical.
It, it, it's going to fall somewhere between regular instruction and pupil support. Instructional coaches would probably fall under instructional support.
The other piece to do that, what you talked about earlier was the fact that this is your general, your interventionists are partially paid out of categorical funds, so could be, could be title funding that pays for some of it depending on how interventionist, so it's not a, it's not a general fund necessarily tax-based or whatever.
So if you look at something like education up there, is that staff or stuff?
Yes.
Or both?
Both.
That's right.
It's that particular program, all things that go into that program.
So you get a different breakdown if you label it different. This is just how you do it for accounting purposes required.
Correct. Like I say, if we want to, if we wanted to look and say, and we, you know, we do, at different times of the year, say, how much is salaries, how much is benefits, then it's a different view than what we're looking at in this particular way. Because, because then you do separate your supplies and materials and those sorts of things.
So when we look at that revenue side, what's the, like, what would be the equivalent for what we receive for special education from our federal and our state for special ed?
I want to say our total, well, our total budget for special education is 16 and some unknown. That's the range, so back to if it were a dollar or what, I mean, it equates to-
But revenue, we wouldn't get-
No, revenue, again, title is fully funded, but we get, or not title, excuse me, federal is fully funded, but we don't receive a lot in special ed federal funding. State is, state is more of a 50 cents on the dollar kind of situation that we receive. So, back to if you're looking at, and again, this is just really very rough, but again, because federal dollars don't play a large part. And there is additional special ed revenue. We do have third-party billing. There's other revenue components that come in, so it's not just a clean-cut answer. But if you were to look and say 50 cents on the dollar of special ed is reimbursed and the other's cross-subsidy, that's essentially where you're coming up. I mean, again, there's other components, but that's very layman's terms for that.
So if we were going to try to equate it, we could say, I mean, maybe 8 cents is what, you know, if we're going to break it down in this dollar?
Yeah, and unfortunately, the revenues, yes, the revenue breakdown though isn't, I mean, we, I could do a program breakdown to say this is the program breakdown on the revenue side. Again, we're categorizing it by the impact, by our source, not by the program in which it's funded. So I pause with that a little bit, shall we?
Yeah. It seems to me too, here is an area where Tom Melcher's done a lot of work, and he can show you what's happened with special ed. And it seems to me what you'll find is that at the federal level, that it's been decreasing, small amounts, but it's been decreasing. The state has been kind of inching up, and they take a much more generous approach than the feds do. And then local cross-subsidy continues to grow, both individually and statewide.
Right. And the other thing I'd want to caution on that too is we do have tuition. Students that are special ed tuitioned out and tuitioned in that aren't necessarily coming into place, so it's not quite as easy as just looking.
So when you say tuition, is that kids who go like to 916?
Yes, yes. They, they, we don't service them for whatever reason, and then that's actually, you know, the way the money works is actually an adjustment against the revenue we receive. There's not paid, there's not, it used to be where checks went back and forth between districts. That doesn't happen anymore. Now it's just an adjustment to the revenue we receive.
How are we doing on third-party billing?
Um, we are doing better than we have. I believe there is still opportunity.
So the previous slide, when you had federal, and I think it was 2%, and then you had miscellaneous and it was 4%. Is there some, like, Title I funds, is that all under federal or is it going to be miscellaneous?
Title would be under federal.
Okay. So, so what's miscellaneous? Would that be tuition we might get from another district, the spending kids here or something?
It would, miscellaneous revenue could be interest earnings, sale of assets, fees for whatever, participation in anything, gate, anything that kind of doesn't hit our levy or the federal dollars. It's like everything else gets put into the miscellaneous category.
Glaring to me, it doubles the federal.
Yeah, but in federal's time, I mean, federal is not big.
Oh, no, it's pretty small.
It's not big. History of budget adjustments and impact. In this slide, we have shown before, and just refresh to account for the last two years, 16, 17, and then 17, 18, where there were no budget adjustments. You can see kind of the, the up and down. As I was trying to evaluate, you know, what is, is there a theme? Is there an underlying presence for why it happened? And even as I looked at the history of budget adjustments or reductions, why do you see, you know, is it above 3 million maybe in a handful of years, and then other years you're below a million? And I don't know, you know, it's so specific to what was going on at that time. And, and people who have been here longer than I could certainly maybe provide more detail, but I look at like 2009, 10, where it was a smaller dollar amount than 10, 11, 11, 12. That was the time of like the era funding, the federal dollars that had come in because of the recession. Our district over the course of a two-year period was about $4.4 million of additional revenue we received from the federal government. That, you know, certainly staff was added, might have helped stave off some costs. When I look at times of when there, and I do have a history of when votes to the public passed and failed, you can maybe see a trend there. Fund balance comes into play. If the fund balance was higher in a particular year, there might have been less cuts moving forward. The, you know, the strategic plans or district initiatives, you kind of see this, you know, what could possibly be driving the history of what's going on. And then, of course, you know, it comes into student loss and other factors that impact your budget all the time. It's just trying to identify, are there other nuances that occur? The last cycle of budget reductions was 2015, 16. I can speak to that because I was here and we did have where we were balanced, structurally balanced with our revenue equaling our expenditure, which then does help stave off kind of the ebb and flow, the really high highs and the really low lows of, of what's going on. You tend to neutralize more when you, once you've established that revenue and expenditure Factors that impact our budget, again, as, as was mentioned, what can? As the board looks to adopt a budget and then move forward with budget planning for future years, what can alter what you're doing? Significant fluctuation in student enrollment certainly can do that. State funding, not keeping up with rising costs, and again, we'll show you the history. That is, we can advocate and talk to our legislators and hope that we get, but ultimately that is, that is a factor that is out of our control and can significantly impact our budget depending on what we plan for. Federal funding changes, and this is both positive and negative for us. Like I say, you had an influx of over $4 million with the era or funding back in 2009. I want to say staff was added in 2010, 11. But then you can have reductions too. You know, title can continue to go down. The special ed component of what the feds contribute can continue to go down. And then beyond our control, as far as the voter-approved levies, we can ask, but the voters control whether they support our initiatives. And then the non-voter-approved levies with that, which actually the board does control to a degree. There's some levies that you are limited in how much you can do and what you can do, and then there's others where it's, you know, it's limited by the state cap or different per-student formulas, and then there's others where there isn't a limit. And then on the expenditure side, the, we control, or the school board controls those expenditures, which is your programming, the support in materials, class size, and employee contracts and benefits. All of those factors can impact our budget. Some of them you have very, no control over, some of them you have little control over, and some of them you do have control over. The first slide in that, Factors That Impact Our Budget, is significant fluctuation in student enrollment. And I'd like to go back to, there was a slide, or at least a version of this slide, that was presented to the school board in September, and it's usually done kind of as the, what did our first day of enrollment, or what did our first day look like? And we talk about transportation and how many kids were served in the lunch line, and how many kids were bussed. And this was, like I say, it's a, it might be a modified version, but it's, it's the same material that says what happened as we moved forward from 2016, 2017, so now this school year, 2017, 2018. The Budget Committee had assumed a year prior that we would be at 8,181 students. That's where they believed we would start the 2017, 18 school year. We actually came in, and this wasn't the, or, you know, what we would use for revenue numbers. When we used October numbers this year, we're actually at 8,193. So we are, we were, as of October, 12 students better than what the Budget Committee had assumed we would be for that October number. So I, you know, that's pretty, that's pretty good. That's almost smack on, and, you know, it was a very, very good number to say, at least revenue that's based off of student count is probably pretty accurate. We did anticipate a decrease of 87, 87 students for the first day, and here's why. Our graduating classes are bigger than our kindergarten classes. They just are, and that's trend. We're graduating classes of, well, in, in 16, 17, we graduated 638 seniors, and this year's incoming kindergarten class on the first day was 551 students. I mean, now, just by sheer attrition, we're graduating classes in the 650 to 7, we're bringing classes in into the mid-5s. It's birth rate, it's how, the age of our population. We know that.
What's the other, what's the other bubble year in high schools? Isn't there another one?
Oh, you're up in, I want to say you're in the high, you're in the high sixes until you probably get to this year's, ninth grade starts to drop off, this year's eighth grade, and then you kind of plateau around the 650 for sixth, seventh, eighth grade, and then you start seeing declines again.
Okay. How much impact from Salem and Sacred Catholic, do we see them coming in at high school? Is there a bump?
Uh, I will give you history because this will be the first year with the grade configuration change, so history would say that we would see, I would say, a few dozen students coming into the junior high at the time for seventh grade. The kids would transition from a parochial school into our school district, do a couple of years in junior high, and then make the transition to high school. I don't know how that is going to change now that we're starting in sixth grade, if the, if they're still going to have the appetite to make that transition and kind of get themselves embedded in, in the public school community. I, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's a hard thing to say what it will look like. They do go through eighth grade. I don't know what their programming looks like. Will they just move into the high school? Maybe. It's just, there's, there's no data to support what will happen, where we had decades worth of trend that would say, you know, we usually get a few dozen kids coming in at the junior high, and then if, and that's usually when we get a big influx, and then because those students move on to the high school. So we're in a little bit of a-
So in the past, it's been about 25 kids or under there?
I would say a couple, and it might, you know, a little, it might be 30, it might be 20. I mean, you're kind of in that range of a few dozen.
So the majority of kids at those schools go on to private elsewhere? Do we know, do you have any idea of that?
I don't know, I, I don't know that that's a fair statement. It almost seems to me that it depends on the class.
Like this last year, we had a big influx in the ninth grade at the high school. So, I mean, you really have to, you really have to dig down year by year. It's, it's difficult, and I would say it gets frustrating on our end to make a generalized statement because it just, it's year to year depending upon what's going on in the grade.
And, and it could come down to, honestly, relationships, good or, you know, how, how they feel about moving, where are their counterparts going and do they want to stay with them? I mean, there's, and then there's the socioeconomic factor. I mean, there's different things, and then there's just the belief, right? There's just the reason why they're in parochial schools to begin with, so.
So accounting for this, would it be fair to say that when you factor in that, that gap between the outgoing graduating class and incoming kindergartners, that we're looking at 35 students?
Mm-hmm.
You know, which I think is really important for the board to be able to communicate to the public that 35 students, you know, when we hear, oh, there was such a mass exodus and, oh, hundreds and hundreds, that, you know, it's just not what the data proves out. That's correct.
What are you talking about, 35 students?
When you account for the 87 in terms of the disparity between the outgoing graduating class and the incoming kindergartners?
Yeah, but that's been, that difference has been the case forever, because so many people choose alternative schools in kindergarten, and they do switch, like, in eighth grade. And the biggest decline, I mean, you know, we get that chart every year with the past, like, 12, you know, 14 years or whatever it is, the history, and you can see what each grade level does through that, you know, it's like a colorful grid with all the difference. You can follow the actual class through the system.
That's your total.
And there is always a big jump in like eighth grade, always, since the beginning of that chart. And kindergarten's always been significantly smaller than the senior class because we pick up kids as they get older. We pick up kids from all kinds of schools. We pick up kids from all kinds of schools. We picked up a whole bunch last year from St. Croix Prep. I know, I think it was like 35 kids, that, that when you look at the, the enrollment numbers for how many kids were in St. Croix Prep the year before, and then you look at them now, they're in our school, you know, the same, that's, they came from there and went here. So, but the total population of kids has not really declined in, in a long time. It's just a maybe tiny bit, 1% maybe?
I would say it's...
It's mostly about all the other choices. We have St. Croix Prep, which has grown enormously since 2004. Now we have, you know, New Heights, which is continuing to do better and better all the time. Now we have River Grove. I mean, we have a lot of choices for people, and I think that's our biggest issue. It's not declining population, it's that there are more choices, and people are choosing other things.
Well, it is definitely declining population. That, that is...
I mean, that's part of it.
I was going to say, to the chart that you're referencing, you are correct. Because I want to say the total available population lies somewhere in the 11,000 area.
Yeah.
However, as stated, eighth grade, you know, that's, at least traditionally, again, this year could be some, this moving into the next year could be different because of the grade configuration change, and we just don't know that. When looking at it though, that is the trend. I mean, we know that, we can expect that, but, but birth rates are down. I mean, they are. We can look at data that says the birth rates, that people aren't having kids like they had kids. I mean, I agree with you in that the 11,000 and what's available, but if, if we look at even what demographic data says, and, and the age of the population that lives within Stillwater, I mean, we're projected to remain flat now, why, for a while, as far as student population goes, and choice comes into play, but I still say, we do have lower birth rates than we did even a decade ago. We do. Now, again, people might, however that looks, but we can anticipate, I, I think it comes down to how you, how you put this into context, because trend over 14 years or whatever, absolutely. But when it's, if it's classified as, back to what, what affects our budget, significant fluctuations in enrollment, we're not seeing significant fluctuations in enrollment in a particular year because of a, a new choice, because of a new charter or a new, it's not a particular year, other than back when prep happened, however long ago, that was a significant fluctuation that would have totally altered the budget. What I'm saying is, we're not seeing significant fluctuations in our budget because of a mass exodus or entrance into our buildings. It's not impacting something that's not predictable to us, is the statement. Does that make sense?
Do we know when your prep started?
I think it was 2004, and they only had about 30 kids or something like that the first year. But when they built their new building, it bumped up a lot really quickly. And so now they're at about 1,200, I think, around 1,200 kids.
Well, and, and again, if you look at, you know, look at, you have a few years in here.
Right. It was in 2007. 2007 is when they built their new building, is when it opened, if I remember, I could be wrong.
That creates, you know, a statement that is appropriate to say there's a mass exodus.
Yeah.
That would be an appropriate statement to say there's a mass exodus. I think when you plan for, and you are actually better by 12 students, I, you know, and, and truly between graduating, and we always factor that in between graduating class and incoming, we know that there's a difference of 87. I, I tend to agree with you when looking at it in the scheme of what a budget does and what the impact does. In the scheme of what's happening, we can be very planful for the impact to the budget, because at least in, in the year that we're looking at, there isn't a mass exodus.
Well, one thing that's exciting is, I think if I remember looking at the data from this past year, we did lose quite a few kids this year, between last year and this year. But we did also gain, like, 35 or something like that in the middle school specifically. So that says to me that people are looking forward to those changes at the high school, and they're wanting to get, get in on the ground floor while they're still in middle school. There were, in both buildings, if I remember correctly, there were, there were quite a few new people that weren't there before.
Under gate program also?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so back to, ooh, wrong button. If you look at the 83-15 to the 81-93, I mean, and 87 is the differential of it.
Well, I think you're going to see too, you know, we're, we're doing things at the elementary level too, to, to increase those numbers. I had the opportunity to go to the Spanish immersion classroom today and see these kindergartners speaking Spanish and understanding it, where I'm just, you know, sitting in the back of the room, like, I can't believe this, because these kids are, you know, about this big, and just spouting off Spanish, and the teachers spouting off Spanish, and they're putting their stuff away, and I don't even know where they're, you know, where it's going, so. And then having, I think Jen, you and I were there when they did the lottery, you know, that, that's an opportunity to get more kids, even at the elementary level, so.
So here is the state funding not keeping up with rising cost slide. That's the one. Yep. And you can, you know, you can see a, a history there. Again, you can predict about what was going on with our state and, and the economy, whether it be national or state's economy at the time, or honestly, who was in political power. And, but nonetheless, what it means to us is that we have seen in our gen-ed formula allowance, again, back to its, the general, general ed piece, and it's only on specific dollar amounts within that formula. Our average increase is 1.53 per year, if you take it over the course of the 15 years, 14 years, 15 years? Operating levy, levy history timeline, and again, as I was trying to do some research to see if I could identify a common theme, I think the common theme is, could lie, at least in part, to what was going on with the levy. And I don't know, honestly, if, if the vote, if the vote created the budget situation, or if the budget situation created the vote. I don't know, you know, again, I wasn't here, but this just provides, and maybe more appropriate for the levy conversation, but just wanted you to have an idea as you look at, you know, the, the graph of what's been done the last, how many years as far as reductions or budget adjustments? And then how did the approval, and this is only operating levy, coincide?
Did any of our failed levies ever cause us to lose our levy, or was it always, it always failed and we had time to pass it before it expired?
Yes. I do not believe there was ever a funding year where you lost your levy. And the last one again was November of 13. And, and the board has had, previous boards have had conversations about, you know, is, do you do one question? Do you do two questions? Do you do three questions? And, and what you can gather from that information as well.
Well, it looks like, just quickly looking at just when they passed, passed in November 2002, passed, one question passed in November 2007, which we probably should have been thankful for, that was a really tough year financially for a lot of people. At least we got one passed. And then 2013, it passed. It's sort of like every five years, we're able to get one passed.
And every other...
And then we had the bond pass two years later, so.
Yeah, again, this is just operating, this isn't...
In terms of the community, they, most people don't really, it's dollars. They, they don't really separate them out, at least in my opinion, but we all know that's totally different, but most taxpayers, you know, go, okay, more money.
It's tricky, doesn't the money come a year later too?
It does.
Yeah, because I think for my password, it's not the same one anymore, it used to be, "pass 2008."
Well, and, and what's also challenging is, as you're looking at these, and so, you know, depending on when, how the question was phrased, and when it hit the taxes, when you're looking at the budget reductions, you're making budget reductions in the year prior. So even though, like, for example, for 15-16, those weren't made in 15-16, they were actually made in the spring, or the 14-15 school year in the spring of 15 leading in. I mean, so...
Yeah, it's always tricky too, because even the graph earlier, where you showed, like, the history of reductions, like, for example, when Obama was in there and they were trying to have an impact throughout the country, and so they put money into the schools. So the recession really hits about '07, '08. The money doesn't start to come in till later, and it's good for about two, three years. So I'm saying, boy, when you really would show up in your budget, it's always a little trickier than this would indicate it is.
Well, and that's why, as I look, I mean, my, my opinion is, as I look at this year, you know, as you're looking out into here, you're talking about things that were added, you know, staff or programs that were added in here, that were then not removed when the funding stream went away, and so now you have this.
And that's what we had.
Yeah, perfect example.
Reading interventionists.
Reading interventionist student advocates.
Math.
Came in there.
Yeah.
Math and reading.
Yeah.
You're right.
And so, and then here I look and say, okay, the vote November of 13 was the Bridge to Excellence, and that passed. And then you have these years, well, the Bridge to Excellence was only meant to support 75%, and there was supposed to be efficiency and reductions for the other 25, and that wasn't happening. And so you, until we made this adjustment, this last two and a half million, and balanced it out, that was part of, that's why I say it's, it's hard to look at a graph and just have a flat approach. There were nuances that also occurred along with the shortage of funding, along with, you know, I mean, decisions that were made and what was going, local decisions.
Yeah. It's almost like if you did this, where you had the influx of federal dollars, and it was a different color, and then they go away, and there, I, I think most people would agree that the interventionist student advocates were a great idea, but the funding went away. The need still stayed there, and the advantage it brought to our kids stayed there, but the funding went away. But it might have been a different picture in 2012, 13, et cetera, in there.
This slide, and again, you will see it with add-ons as we get to the levy conversation, but back to the levy, to the 26% of revenue. When looking at the analysis on a $250,000 home, it has been the school board's approach to remain flat, levy nu, or tax-neutral as far as school taxes go. And that, when we look at, you know, when the 97 and a half million passed, and, and again, this is on payable for, I don't have the year, taxes, oh, taxes payable for, let's say, for example, 15, is for the 15-16 school year. Again, you kind of are off years, so...
It passed in 2013.
That was the operating.
Isn't that what we're talking about?
I actually said the 97 and a half mil, well, you're right, because while it's the tax impact on a home, the historical portion of us trying to remain flat. So if you passed in 2013, and I want to say that applied to, it was payable, well, this would be payable 14, so this would be the 14-15 school year, you'd be right in there with that increase of the 13 vote. And then notice, we've maintained neutrality and actually decreased as far as what it, the impact of any decisions we made levy-wise, plus the voter-approved 97 and a half million the last four years. Again, I would attribute that, and we'll get into further detail on May 3rd, I would attribute that to, honestly, tax-based growth. I mean, so back to, is it still the goal to, to maintain neutrality? Do we look at the neighbors? What does that look like? But I just wanted to provide a visualization of what the impact has been to someone who owns a $250,000 house since the 2007, 2008 school year.
And is this voter and non-voter approved shown here? So that, that change in legislation where we weren't at the cap anymore, that wouldn't change in here at all?
No, this would just, no. Well, no, it wouldn't, because it would...
That would slide down to non-voter.
It, it allows us to change what, what we could ask for, but we didn't change what we asked for.
That's what I was going to ask, is so when you see a decline like that, does that mean we could, when there's room there for us to go and increase the amount we're asking? If there, if you're saying it's an increase in property tax base?
I'm saying I...
Like, there's increase in value of the community, so we can ask for more, because it's still not above that percent?
So the answer is yes, but I don't think you can look at that looking at this, this graph, because the tax base doesn't determine how much we can ask for in an operating referendum. What I would say to Shelley's point is, when we had a formula adjustment that we used to get paid for all of our students, which might actually account for this, a piece of this decline, when, the formula that used to exist and when we were at the cap, it was based off of, a few things happened, but it was based off of, we would get paid for all students that reside in Stillwater area, school district, whether they attended the public school or not. That's how we collected the money. The formula changed to now, we collect the money on the kids that are in our building, the number. So because they reside here, if they choose to attend something not outside of our building, we don't collect levy dollars for them. However, we do collect levy dollars for students that maybe weren't a part, don't live in Stillwater, and now come to our buildings. Does that make sense? So that too, and I'm trying to remember when that formula change happened, but again, the intent of this, of this graph in the simplest form was just to say, if we were looking at, if the board continued, wanted to, as far as holding on to the neutrality and what we've done to a $250,000 homestead residential property, we've maintained that neutrality, and, and actually have decreased slightly.
How, do businesses pay the same percentage that we would? Is it...
Their class rate is different, so they get taxed different. I'll go in, I do have a few slides just to kind of show how things are taxed different, just to provide a little bit of understanding of how that works.
Plus, something else that's in those figures, it would seem to me, is new development, new property.
It's your tax base.
I mean, it gets bigger. And so if you look across from Lake Elmo Airport, and you see all those new homes in there, that adds to the total sources of revenue.
And also, isn't, so since it is partially based on the actual enrollment, if our enrollment is declining, isn't that reflected in here as well?
It could be, but it depends on what we did with all of the other levies. So if our enrollment went down and we were just collecting less money for the referendum piece of the levy, we might have collected more for the long-term facility maintenance piece of the levy. There might be another levy that offsets, so ultimately the impact to the taxpayer stayed the same, it's just where it was coming from is different.
I guess what I'm asking is, like, that decline, if, if our enrollment went up, those bars would go up too, right?
Not necessarily, because if...
Unless something else changed.
Because if the board is making a decision to do something different with a different levy in the 37-page levy document, because again, if the conversation is always, we don't want to increase taxes, you start adjusting other levies, which has always been the alt facility or the long-term facility maintenance, to make sure that whatever fluctuation you have in enrollment or whatever, you maintain that neutrality. That's, so you can't, so back to the conversation that we had at the last learning session, all things being equal, if the levies stayed exactly the same, the tax base stayed the same, everything stayed the same with the exception of student enrollment, then yes, you would have an adjustment. But there's many, many, many other factors that go into that, and the conversation has been at the board level, just keep it here.
So I guess according to that logic, if our enrollment did increase, and that was the most important piece, was to keep it level, we would have to drop the amount or something?
That's right.
If that was what we wanted.
If your tax base didn't grow to help support that.
Right, to help, yeah, balance it out, yeah.
So, last thing we want to cover tonight is the topic of class size, and like, we pointed out earlier, kind of get the start conversation going around class size, and what is, how does that impact, what, what are decisions that can be made around that? And so, to start with, on the, on the right-hand side of the slide is the current board-approved staffing ratio. So when we start in the winter, looking at enrollments, and looking at how are we going to staff our buildings, the numbers on the right are what we use to put into our formulas to figure out how many... to figure out how many staff do we need and/or can afford to keep those staffing ratios.
When was that ratio set, do you know?
I don't know when, the first year was that that was set, it's been going for a long time.
We ended here in two thousand six, and I remember the max, at least up through fifth grade, was twenty-seven. So, at least that's been increased since two thousand six, because there was a year when we cut all the home act and the shop classes, and that was a huge cut year. And that's when I think they also increased that number.
And they increased by one money, maybe six years ago.
That was the sixth period day.
Spring of fifteen, cut for fifteen, sixteen, was a million dollars in class size.
So that's where the, so the important part, and the important part of it is knowing that that's, that's the ratios, and what you'll see is that there, when we hear things like, why is second grade so much bigger than first grade? What you can see is, we staff that at four more kids per FTE. Same thing happens in fourth grade. In addition to that, as we've talked about several times before, while that's the staffing ratio, we also have ranges. We go, we go four up and four down in K one, two, three, and we go three up or three down in four, five right now. Because not everything's perfect when you're, at this point in time, when you're running seven buildings, you, you need a little bit of flexibility in there to decide, when do we go to another section's worth? And so what has been past practice has been that, is on the high end, which is typically what people, you know, you hear about, is when we get to the high end, for example, the high end in fourth grade, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, the high end is thirty-two point four. So, in this staffing ratio, going three above, that's where we would, Kristin and Kathy and I would come together and say, okay, this is where we're at, what can the building handle? What, what happens if we drop this? How does that all play out? Does it make the best sense? And can we afford it at that point in time? Do we, what are the other things that we're looking at across the district as far as a priority to do it? So you're navigating all that. But that's, for good, bad, and different, that's how the system is set up right now. Based off of that staffing ratio, what's on the left-hand side, this is where we sit going into next year right now. So, our projected elementaries right now, all of them except one class right now at Brookview, is within the staffing ranges, so either four up or four down, going into next year. The other thing to point out is that eighty of a hundred and forty of our classrooms for next year are actually below the staffing ratio. So they're on the low end of the range, over, right around, a little over fifty percent.
For elementary.
For elementaries. Secondary gets staffed a little bit differently, because kids travel differently in secondary, right? So you're staffing on a straight ratio of thirty-three kids to one FTE, is how you calculate that out. If, right now, it's, right now, the secondary schools will be making adjustments all the way up until August. And so, on any given day, you could pull a class list in Skyward, and you might see a thirty-six class right now, and by the time we get to August, it'll be down to twenty-nine, because they've readjusted, kids have made changes. So you can't do the same, you can't do the same two bullet points, like I can do for elementary right now, for secondary until we actually get up to that, to closer. But, I can tell you, as, from an average standpoint, we are right at, or below thirty-three across the board, as they sit right now. We've got a couple of sections that are fluctuating thirty-fours, thirty-fives.
So I heard a little bit, oh, I have two questions, actually. Why do we use the point four two? How do you define a point four of a student, or point four two of a teacher?
You don't, it's just when you divide, you know, if you have ten classes and you have thirteen kids, one of them gets split up when you do the numbers, but it's not.
But I mean, this is like what we established as a ratio, like, why, why wouldn't it just be like twenty-five? I mean, doesn't, how does that make a difference?
Because once you start, it compounds upon itself, once you go, so let's say you rounded up to twenty-two. You've now compounded it, so you have to.
You're looking at dollars.
You gotta be willing, yeah, you're, well, you're looking at FTE, so which equates to dollars. Which is the last bullet down there. Every, every FTE we add is a over a hundred thousand dollar decision annually.
That's salary and benefits.
That's salary.
Of a teacher, average teacher.
Average teacher.
So, I have heard some things about some classes at the sec, middle schools and high schools being like, up around forty, forty-two, whatnot. And I'm not sure why, why that would be if we're, we're at this ratio, or what classes at the secondary level don't have to fall under this.
Two perfect examples are, we will run in at the secondary, this happened this year at the high school for sure. We have, you get into numbers where, if you split the class into two sections, you'd be sitting at, like, let's say you've got a class of forty, you'd be sitting at two sections of twenty. Well, we're not gonna run two sections of twenty kids in a class, while we're trying to make all that work. So, what may happen, and what does happen, is the principal will work with the teacher and say, what would you like to do? Do you wanna, do we wanna jam thirty-three into here and tell fourteen kids that they can't have the class? Or, what do you think about teaching a larger class? And some teachers will say, all right, I'll do that for this year to make it work, because I don't wanna lose those kids. That's one option. The other thing that happens is, we run what are called flex classes at the high school. So, you essentially take, math is one example, you might have two teachers, and you might have two kid, two sections worth of kids, where on average, it works out to a larger number. But in reality, if you watch the class, you've got two staff people in there with those kids that are in there. We also have, we also have a.
Journalism?
A journalism class where you may have kind of the collegiate-type setup, where, where it looks like there's forty-two kids in a class, but they're not all in there at one time. You could have, you then have on the other side of it, Todd Kapsner is a great example, where, if you looked at this, at the sheets, you'd see he has classes of one and two and three. Well, they're all happening at the same time, because he's willing to teach a section of woods, and a section of metals, and a section of project lead, the way, all at the same time, to get, let's just say it's third period, up to thirty kids in there, so that kids can take those onesy-twosy classes. So, it becomes, it becomes a communication piece, because it's real easy, again, to generalize and say, well, we have ridiculously high class sizes, but until you actually dig in and see what is going on, and what's that about, that it may or may not be. That's not to say that we haven't had some classes in the past. We've had world language sections that have been, we've had a couple of French sections in the last couple of years that have been really high. And, and so you, you run into issues like, can you find another teacher? Can you make the schedule work? Can you, how does it all happen? Some years it works, other years it doesn't, and so you're left making a choice of, how do we, how do we pull it off? There's, it's kind of like the budget thing, there's a lot of factors that go into.
Well, and I think particularly, at the elective level, that's how you keep some of your electives, is you combine classrooms. It's really their version of third, fourth grade class going on simultaneously. And it's not easy, but they make it work.
And in our high school, where we run what we call lots of singletons, right? So we're about offering a ton of stuff to kids. Every time you offer a singleton class, and a full load of kids doesn't sign up for the class, you create an imbalance in the system. Because now you've, let's say you've got a class that kids love, but you only have enough for one section of it. Now, those kids that take that one section, and if they're also kids that need orchestra, and they're kids that need world language, and they're kids that need AP English, they now are locked into a schedule that no other kid can enter into that schedule, and may force a government class to be thirty-six in order to make it all fit. And so, it's very complex.
How much communication is there to families that this, you know, this, we're able to offer this class because it's bigger? Or, you know, because we hear about, people don't like that it's a bigger class, but if they understand maybe that the only option that their child has to be in that class, maybe they'd be a little more amenable to the idea.
I can tell you that I myself have had conversations with parents, and that doesn't help. At that point in the game, people don't care. They, honestly, they just, they want us to fix it. And there isn't, at that point in time, there really isn't a fix to it.
Another wild card, Bob, and I'm not positive that I know how Stillwater deals with it, is you have a lot of kids who, juniors, they register for senior year. And some of them are very ambitious, and maybe they've got a lot of AP classes, or, or maybe they got calculus, or whatever the courses happen to be. Over the summer, some change your mind and decide they want an easier role. Now, again, you can make all the rules you want, but it depends on what you do in practice when you allow kids to change or not change. And so my point is, you're doing this probably back in second semester sometime now, yeah, actually, way before this. Kids will change their mind, but that can throw off some of your best plans on numbers.
It, that's what, that's exactly what happens, so everybody's already been scheduled initially now, right?
It's a secondary issue, particularly at high school.
And it's not unique to Stillwater. It, it just, that's what it is.
Because you have to have your staff, you're gonna have to let your staff know if they're going.
The hard part, and I've seen it, you may have a high school principal who, they come to the philosophical judgment, put kids where they wanna be. Or you've got people, uh-uh, you said this, it's ingrained. And those people are in between.
We try to put them where they wanna be, but there gets to a point where then, you know, especially with that whole French piece that Bob gave the example of, when you want to reduce class sizes, and you have a bunch of kids who wanna do that, it's really hard to find a French teacher, and it's even more difficult to find a French teacher who's not gonna work full-time. So, this is some of that, you know, we talk about getting staff, you know, when they're few and far between, whether you're talking to a language teacher, or a special education teacher, they have lots of choices. And if it's not full-time, then they're probably gonna be going somewhere else.
So, to continue on with, with just kind of the overview of this, when we talk about adjusting class sizes, what Kathy helped pull was just another example, I talked a little bit about this last time, but at the elementary level, in that first row there, if we were to make a reduction to that ratio by one student in second and fourth grade, pick those, because those are the two big ones, right? Those are the big jumps. So if you reduce those, both, if, in second grade, if we reduce that ratio by one, it would have no impact to our annual cost, because it doesn't impact any of our buildings. Reducing that ratio by one just redistributes kids in such a way that we don't, nothing changes across the system. Yep, these are all using next year. It typically doesn't though, because one doesn't have an impact. The same thing would have happened in fourth grade. The important, more important thing, I think, is, even if we go to two kids, it doesn't have an impact. Looking at next year's numbers, you wouldn't see anything different if we would have changed those ratios.
Explain why.
Because you're going across seven buildings, rather, it's not just one building, right? So if you reduce the ratio over six hundred and fifty kids, that's a, that's a, the impact is so insignificant when you start playing out all those sections.
So how did increasing by one a few years ago save us a million dollars? If doing the opposite doesn't.
That I couldn't answer for you.
We weren't as balanced as we are now.
I was just gonna say, some schools got hit disproportionately hard.
And you're gonna see that now in the next two rows, right? So if, you take second and fourth grade for next year, and you reduce the ratio by three, okay? So that's where you see it, you see an impact to the budget. So you're gonna reduce the ratio by three, how we staff in second and fourth grade, that would give you a net result in second grade, so it would cost us three hundred thousand fifteen, a little more every year, but it still wouldn't have an impact to fourth grade. You'd actually have to get to four students in fourth grade to see an impact. And what you'll notice on the right-hand side there is, three students only impacts two of our buildings. So you'd only see a change in two of our buildings because of the way the numbers are in those buildings. And you'd only see it impacted two buildings in fourth grade, if you went up to four students. So, that kind of explains a little bit that, it just depends upon what the class is like in that building at that time. Then, if, at the secondary level, back to that thirty-three, if we reduce thirty-three point zero eight to thirty-two point zero eight, I talked about this a little bit before, that would be an annual cost to our budget of a little over half a million dollars a year. It would get us a little over five point two seven FTE across six twelve. And if you remember what I shared with you then, is if you divvied that out equally, it would give you three-quarters of a teacher per grade level. That's what a little over a million, or half a million dollars a year gets you. The other thing that we did is, we looked at then, if you kept that ratio the same, but now the range thing, so the top end. If you reduced the top-end range by one student across all of elementary for next year, it would be an annual cost to the budget of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and it would, it would impact four of our seven elementary schools in terms of adding sections to their schools to reduce class sizes. That'd be by one student. So that would be saying, we're going to, in kindergarten and first grade, it's gonna go down to twenty, the high end will be twenty-four, point four two, second, third will be twenty-eight, and then, fourth and fifth will go down to thirty-one. If you did it by two students, it'd be a little over half a million, and it still wouldn't impact more than four. And how we know this is, we have the formulas set up, we can plug these numbers into the formula and into the spreadsheet, and it'll kick us out. So for example, that, by one, I can tell you that the buildings at this point that would be impacted would be grade four at Anderson, kindergarten at Brookview, grade four at Lake Elmo, and grade two at Lily Lake. That would be if we reduced the upper range by one. If you decrease the top range by two, it would be grade four at Anderson again, kindergarten at Brookview again, grade three at Lake Elmo, and grade four at Lake Elmo, and grade two at Lily Lake. So, we've got the formulas down to that level of detail, where we can tell you, if you do this, here's what it's gonna cost you annually, and here's where the impact will be based on where our kids are in what building.
You know, one thing though, I think, formulas are great, but sometimes I wonder if, and this is what legislatures do all the time, because somebody comes up with a different alternative, if you targeted particular areas, like I'm saying at the secondary level, sometimes I've, I've heard people say that social studies or, or foreign languages in particular, the numbers are greater. And, and, and again, without studying that up close, I'm saying, suppose you, instead of trying to work off a formula, said, okay, we know there are all these pluses, suppose we just target a pers, a particular discipline.
So that's what I would say back to the board, is, yes, you can, what I would tell you is, we have spent everything. So like going into next year, what, what these costs are, would be real costs. All, all of our FTE is out in the building, so the board would have to make the decision, we want a priority, we wanna prioritize this, and we need to have, so if you want five more FTE, for example, to take care of social studies, to use in your example, the question then becomes, where are you gonna get the money to pay for the five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars FTE? And it goes back to what we talked about before. You either have to figure out how to bring it in as revenue, or you gotta figure out where you're not gonna prioritize in your current system to leave.
And to use another example, and I'm just saying, to complexity, because what we're looking at is, one, on the revenue side, you're gonna have to create options of what you're trying to accomplish. Like, if you're after equity, in some cases, what you may wanna look at is particularly title schools, and say, do we wanna create another section here? Because one of the bases there is those are high poverty, are higher poverty schools.
Yep, so then, again, you can do that. We're staffing our buildings, exact, and that's why I showed you the slide before this. We are currently staffing right into board parameters. So we are, we're spent, we're using.
You're on the formula.
We're using the formula that was approved by the board to staff everything the way it is, and what it's getting, we're getting the exact results that the system is designed to get with our staffing and our class size numbers. If you wanna change that, again, either figure out how to bring more money in, or you gotta figure out what's not a priority that will then prioritize what you're talking about.
I, I would like to, I like what, I like where you're going with that though, Director Patachik, because I do, I do think that there are some really key disciplines, and I think there are some key grades that really need more intentional focus. And, you know, I think of my three kids, and my oldest had some classes that were very, they were big, they were, they were large, but they were AP classes, the kids knew, it was almost like a college-type of class, they knew what they had to do, and it wasn't such a thing. They were, they, were they too large? One could argue yes, but they were at a level where they were almost ready for college, and it wasn't such a thing. Exactly, you know, however, to the point, you know, something like a foreign language. So I, I'm, I'm not saying that we should go back to the drawing board, but I think it's a provocative thing to consider. You know, might we wanna be more intentionally creative about how we address the topic?
Well, and that's where I think, the topic isn't necessarily class size, I think that's what comes out, but it's that other things are happening, and then the class size becomes what you can tangibly say, but I don't, if you reduce it by five and not see changes in those, so what else is?
I think that's, that's the key, and I think that's the message that we as a board have to get out, that when you get the email that says, we need to reduce class size, well, we really don't need to reduce class size,
we really don't need to reduce class size because that's not really the problem. Do we have to focus what the problem is at, at various school buildings? Yes. Then you have the conversation, okay, it's going to cost this much, where do you want to spend that? Do you want to cut here? The other conversation, I think, if you add on to Brookview and you add two-hundred more students, does that help the budget? I mean, isn't that why you would seriously consider, we have these issues, if we can expand and increase the population of students coming into our district, there's a perfect opportunity. So, you know, there's, these questions come up as to why would you do it, you know, here? Well, because it affects everything else.
I think one of the other pieces that it's important for us to remember and it's, it's what all of you have said is it's, you know, are, not just in Stillwater, not just in Minnesota, across the nation, class size is somebody, something that's, you know, most folks kind of grab onto and think, well, if that's smaller, it's going to make a bigger difference. And I can tell you as a classroom teacher for seventeen years, it's not always that class size. It is some of the behaviors, but even more than that, it's the systems that we need to put in place. And so an example of that is, you know, Lake Elmo had, what are we, almost up to seven-hundred-some kids the first year we came. We started putting in systems with the green room with, which you've heard and putting a team together to help support. And they're one of our largest buildings and, you know, they're doing well and they have really high needs at that building. So it's also the combination of putting the systems and getting our staff trained. And those needs bubble up. You know, a parent had said to me, well, I don't ever want this to happen in any more schools and I don't think any of us do. But kids with different needs move into schools every year and you can never predict where that's going to be. So it's important to get all of our staff trained and give them the support they need and, you know, keep people here to be able to do the work and, and learn how to do that with their kids, so.
But like I mentioned, without two-hundred kids, which.
This year? Yeah, but last year is when they saw a significant change by putting in systems. Their, their behavior referrals dropped like less than half, so.
Is there any, any point in us looking at, maybe we do decrease those by one or two, if they don't make a financial impact, will that make, will it say something to people like we're, we're making this adjustment so that the ranges are smaller, even though it's not going to change anything for next year? Is there any reason that we would want to do that?
Well, and I, I could take what you just said and kind of go, like, I think it would be really nice to explore what the, what, like, I think, you know, to be able to say that none of our, none of our kindergarten classrooms have more than twenty students and that would be a really good thing to be able to say to anyone who's thinking about coming here. So if you think about how we just talk about these things in terms of customer service, in terms of communicating in ways that people can understand that it's something tangible, oh, that's something I want. So we could say, no kindergarten classroom in our district has more than, has more than twenty kids or more. And that's a reduction from what we're talking here. And actually, I think, I understand where we're coming from with the staffing ratio, but I just feel like when you talk about class size, as, as an absolute number, it's a little bit more tangible. I know it's harder to work with, but it's a little bit more tangible for people to see. But I would like to know how much it would actually cost to say, let's just look at taking anybody that's in a writing class, for example, at any grade level, like any English class. To me, that's one of, got to be one of the harder ones. Think about having an extra ten kids in your class and you have to grade that many essays, ten-page essays. Ten more kids in your class makes a big, okay, how many times do you get a bigger class before you say, alright, that's it, I'm taking this one assignment out, they're going to do without it and I'm going to, or I'm going to make the assignment shorter. So now our kids are getting less practice writing, you know, because it's just easier for the teacher. You know what I mean? Like, let's think about some of these strategies. Where does it really make a difference to have a smaller class size? Because we have to, we have to agree that in some cases, it for sure does make a difference.
So I would, I would, so I would put two things. So if you, let's just say for next year, the way the numbers are here, as I look up the numbers, by straight math, if you were going to say, we want, we don't want any kindergarten sections over twenty, that would mean you'd have to come up with seven-hundred-thousand dollars for next year because you'd need seven more kindergarten teachers. So again, I go back to, and you can, you can.
I guess I just want to, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to be able to talk about that number in a way that doesn't sound like, well, that's such a big number, there's no way we're going to get. I want to know what the numbers are so we can say, alright, if this is something we do care about and this is how much it's actually going to cost, what could we do? Let's think about it from an optimistic point of view. Like, if that's the goal, alright, let's work together and try and figure out how to get there.
Well, I don't think you should take it as optimistic or pessimistic. My job is just to give you the numbers. It's to tell you, you're, you're saying, I want, if, if we were going to look at kindergarten across the board, no more than twenty, the impact to the system will always boil down to dollars because it has to do with teachers, period.
And that's classroom teachers, that's not your specialist.
That's not your specialist. So to do that, the fact is, it's a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar. The reason it's important and to do it as not optimistic pessimistic is, when you're talking about budget, the real thing that the board does have to struggle with then is, how do you come up with the money to pay for seven more kindergarten teachers? Which, great, that's perfect, but it's how do you do that? And it really is one of two things, and we keep saying this. You either have to figure out how to bring more money into the system we cover, or you got to figure out if you're going to do that, what is less of a priority that you can then come up with that? And it's not a one-time expense. It's a annual expense that will increase over time because as you bring those teachers in, they step every year. And so it's a compounding. So it isn't pessimistic, it's just, those are what, that's the, that's the fact.
And I guess I maybe misspoke. I guess I'm talking about more being strategic and planning forward with saying, here are the numbers and say, you know, make, set it, set a goal that we, that we could agree that we would, would like to get to and then be able to work on it saying, instead of saying, well, this, these are expenses, we can't, we don't have any more money, so we're stuck with this. You know, instead of looking backwards and saying, well, you know, we don't have any control over this.
That's what we're kind of trying to build up to though. Is that you, we're trying to give you this picture of where we have been financially, where we are now, what choices you do have with levies, you know, negotiated contracts and benefits and class size because you, you know, you can't have, you can't have everything up here, you know, or class size down here. And I think I want second gen, so I think that's where we're trying to move the board to, because you don't need to make a decision by this month or next month, we've already, you know, staffing, the process keeps going whether we like it or not. So what we're trying to do is give you all the basics so you can see where we are financially and then what you might want to do. And you have lots of choices about what you might want to do. I don't think you'll find any of us who wouldn't love to say twenty kindergartners. I've had twenty-seven in a class and was ready to pull my hair out. You know, it can be done, but I, I think all of us would like that. So I think what we're trying to do is set you up with the next sessions to have a good understanding of how all this goes and then you can say, alright, what might we want to do differently? And if twenty at kindergarten is our goal, well, then maybe we start working with the community, help them understand that if you have a lecture AP class, you might have, some school districts have sixty where they pack it because the teacher really is doing lots of lectures. And then maybe if it's a, you know, if it's a chem class or something, then they go back and they have smaller groups for labs, more of a college. I mean, there are different places that we can share with you what they're doing.
I have to apologize that I have, I have to go. I have a child in St. Paul, but I just wanted to add to that, the systems, when you're talking about the systems a little bit, and also your third-party payment question, I wanted to ask about that in more detail, but I'm not going to be able to get to that. But I would like to argue just a little bit that, you know, the systems are an area of continued, that we take that seriously as an area of continued growth and consideration. Because while I, I see improvement, I guess I, I see a lot of areas where we could, you know, improve a little bit and just be cognizant of that. That's, that's one thing I'd like to just be aware of. Thank you so much, appreciate it. I'm sorry, I have to leave.
No worries.
One thing I'd like to see, and I don't know if it's, because I know there was a rather comprehensive study that was done several years ago when they looked at weighted staffing, which I know was, you know, completely out of our realm of, you know, reality financially. But in some ways, I hear what you're saying, Sarah, in some ways I think that, you know, really looking at it at need, because in some ways I think saying, oh, twenty in a class is almost, you know, it's making a lot of assumptions, right? That all those twenty students are, you know, because you could have twenty class and guess what, it's going to be way harder than a class of thirty-two just because of the composition. And so is there a way that we can really look at, in particular, I would argue, agree with Mike, that maybe in the Title I schools is a good place to start, but looking really where that need is. Because I'll tell you, I have a lot of friends that say Cory Prep, whose classes are way bigger than ours, but because there's two adults, it just seems more manageable and perception and feeling for the adult and the child, or for the parent and the child. And so when there is high need, you know, looking at a para, looking at a, you know, some classes won't need that.
And many districts do do that where they put aside a half a million or more each year to say, as things bubble through, then we're going to have additional para or somebody else.
Because I think that's what's going to happen this year is, you know, like you said, kids come in, we don't know that that need's there, the staffing's set, and then you're halfway through here and somebody's drowning and we don't have any way to help them. It'd be nice if we had that worked in that.
Well, and one of our Anderson teachers who's been here some time shared with me, she said, I don't know, seven years ago, I think she said, things bubbled up within she and another person's classroom, the two classrooms that were there. And so they did bring in a teacher, not for the whole day, but for literacy, for the two of them that were from like ten until two. And she said, that reduced our groups, it worked great, we, you know, so I think our teachers have lots of ideas about how to do that too.
When we look at it again, can you, I know you showed us a slide at some point of the comparison districts and class sizes, can you make sure that's in the next one?
See, I agree on that same thing because it seems from those slides in the past, we were comparable. Again, I mean, a little bit dark, let's say, we want to be better, but we can't always pull that off, but suppose, but regardless, I think the slide showed us at the elementary, we were pretty competitive, if not better than many. I think at the secondary level, we're, we're less so. I, I think who takes the hit in all of this is, is particularly is high school.
But at the same time, it'd be nice to see which classes and, you know, and to look at that, what we were talking about, like, is it, do we want to have different ranges for different types of classes? Or is that one way to, to make sure we're doing the best we can with staffing?
Just before we, before, and I'll make sure Jedfer has this too, but if there are things specifically that you'd like us to touch on with the levy presentation, we're working on that now, we'll pull in, you know, some of the things about comparisons, how far from the range, what's our history been, you know, just as much of that general information that we think will be important for you, but if there's a specific question you have, let us know.
I think along those lines, something that might be useful to look at, and we, and this goes back a little bit, I think it goes back to a time when Cory was here, he put out a listing of metro schools, particularly our area, and what levies they were kind of living off of, who had a tech levy, who didn't, who had a general levy, who didn't. And, and it was historic as well, so I'm saying it probably looked at like five years, ten years or something like that. And then also, what's always in there is the schools that were grandfathered, who could go higher. I think there's about a dozen of those.
Actually, with the formula change, we're now at, it's funny because I do have, I don't have the tech or the capital projects component of the levy, but the op levy in and of itself, there are now, at least as far as metro districts go, there are two that are above the state cap for the rest of us. Now there's other districts that have authority beyond the state cap, but they're.
But they haven't gone there.
Correct.
Okay.
So do you know what the two are?
Uh. Rosneal?
No.
A Dyna, it's a Dyna.
Mm-mm. A Dyna's above us, but they are not there. I want to say Hopkins and St. Louis Park.
Sounds about right.
I, I have it, I have it, yeah, that's already a slide.
But I'm saying that's good to know when you're, when you're doing comparisons, I think.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.